Goes all the way to the line. You're stuck, Ira.
I'm not stuck, you are, I'm fine.
You can't, I can't even see you moving.
I'm seeing you.
Making sure you're signing on. Hi, I'm just making sure you're signing on for the meeting. Yep. All right, that's what I figured. Okay, thanks. We just have one John trying to sign on. Steve Morabito is an attendee.
I thought I just promoted him.
Okay.
I think he's at work and he's gonna want to speak first. If that's okay. I mean, after, after you go through the.
That'll be up to the chairman to call when he calls proponents.
Okay.
And there's John. So we're all set, Athlee. The meeting of the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. Roll call?
Roll call of the members in attendance, Mr. Bucili. Mr. Bucili is present. Mr. Lemonna?
Here.
Here, Mr. Lopes.
He's on mute.
Yes.
I'm here.
Mr. Lopes is here. Mr. Pelton?
Here.
Here, and Mr. Tucker?
Here.
There is one item before the board this evening. The application of Sandra M. Tapia, 57 Chamberlain Ave. Revere, Mass., requesting a variance of Title 17, Chapter 17.16, Section 17.16.205A of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere. Distance between a kennel and a residential use to enable the appellant to operate a kennel at 100 VFW Parkway.
And the applicant, if you're present, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, my name is Sandy Tapia. My address is 57 Chamberlain Avenue, and I am here to get the variance for 100 VFW Parkway.
Okay. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I will ask if there's any proponents, knowing that Steve Morabito would like to speak as the counselor first. So please unmute yourself, Steve, and you're welcome to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be really quick. I just want to verify that you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
Excellent. I'm just tuning in today to let you know that I am a proponent, and I don't see anything wrong with this amendment change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Tony, Jerry? Okay, Tony, speak.
But thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm sure you know that this was voted on 10 to 1 by the city council as a special permit with the condition that this variance be granted. This is this is these residents are separated by a four-lane highway. That wasn't what this zoning ordinance was intended for. This was to keep kennels away from residents. There's no abutting residence to this parcel. In fact, I've got a public hearing coming up at the next city council meeting to amend the zoning ordinance that eliminates when it's when it's separated by a highway. So we wouldn't be here before us if that had been done before. But this is kind of a unique situation. This is a great use. There's been a lot of effort put into this. The person proposing this has put a lot of work in and done everything that's been asked of by the city, by the building department, by anybody who's been involved with this, and she's been very cooperative.
Tony, you're, Tony, your volume? Counselor Zambudo, the, there's no sound.
Oh, I apologize. It's probably my, my internet connection. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. So you didn't get anything I said?
Just that, that last 15, 20 seconds or so.
Is that what you missed?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that was probably that I was saying that there's a I've got a zoning amendment in, coming up for a public hearing at our next city council meeting that eliminates this when it, when it falls between a highway separating from residences. So we wouldn't even be, this wouldn't even be before the board. So I guess what I'm saying is it's a great use. I'm hoping that the board members will see it my way and see that it is in no way detrimental to the neighborhood. Certainly a lot less offensive than the highway itself. So anyways, that's my case, and I would ask for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors wish to speak? Please raise your hand and we'll unmute you.
Counselor Rotundo has his hand raised.
Okay, I also see John Powers with his hand raised.
Okay.
Who would wish to speak first? John, you're ahead. Go ahead, John.
Still wide, counselor.
Can't hear you, John.
Michael.
There you go, John.
Okay, I, I can wait. If Counselor Rotundo wants to speak, I can wait.
No, sir, that's, it's your ward. I'm more able to wait, but if you would like me to go forward, I'm more than happy to do so right now.
Okay, I, so you might be working or something and you had the opportunity.
No, sir. Please, it's your ward.
All right, first of all, as Counselor Rotundo said, it is my ward. And the proponent that is looking to develop this dog kennel is in my ward also. But more importantly than that, I've represented Ward Five for a long time. And I have never, ever, in the time I spent down the pines, and I spent a lot of time down the pines, I have never had one person utter a unfavorable word against this young lady that's looking to open a dog kennel. You know, for years down there, we had Wonderland, 100 dogs a night kennel down there. Never heard of one complaint, and I live right in back of Wonderland, okay? And I probably would have been the first person to hear a negative comment. You know, we, we talk about new businesses, hope, businesses are leaving day and day and night, closing down because of this pandemic. You know, we have a young lady that wants to open a business. And that reminds me somewhat of Ronald Reagan's trickle-down effect that businesses. Here's a young lady that wants to supply a service to the residents of this city, which is much needed. She also is gonna be a, is a, gonna be a taxpayer because the landlord, she doesn't own this property, but we're increasing this, and the landlord is gonna gain for that. So we're gonna, we're gonna increase the taxes there. I, I don't understand why this would even be before the ZBA. The city council and the city Revere voted 10 to 1 in favor of this project, 10 to 1, okay? So, you know, what are we doing here? I, I can't but help but urge the, the zoning board of appeals to support this young lady. She's looking to contribute to the city, not take away. You know, it's, to me, it's a no-brainer. You know, we should be applauding this young lady for opening a business in the city of Revere, or increasing her business in the city of Revere. That's what, that's what it's all about. You try to bring business into the city, you try to bring people into the city, you try to improve things in the city, and that's basically what we're doing. This might be a small part of it, but it's part of it. When you say no to one small business, you're saying no to just about every other business. So with that, I would hope that the zoning board of appeals would support this young lady. She, she's done a fine job so far in her business, and I've probably seen her out there, like I said, for five years or so. Never had a complaint, and don't expect I will have a complaint. So I would, again, once again, hope that the zoning board of appeals would support her in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next proponent, please.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Okay, there's Jerry. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and fellows of the members of the board. I would also like to state that I am a proponent of this amendment and variance. Like my fellow colleague said, he is, you, you have to give a person credit, starting a business during a pandemic when businesses are closing. And that, I, I give her a lot of credit in doing so. And she, from what I was told, she has complied with all that has been asked of her. And I think adjacent buildings on that side are all commercial buildings. Has been voted 2 to 1 on the city council, and more importantly, the ward counselor is in favor of that. And I, I feel that giving some consideration and hope that the board votes favorably on this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. George, I see you back on. You wanted?
I, I am, just like my fellow counselors, without getting into the particulars, I support this project, I support the ward counselor. Hope they vote on this tonight and affirmatively pass it accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day now.
Counselor Richard, if you're on, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to briefly echo the sentiments of the previous speakers and the previous counselors. I would like to go on record as in support of this variance. You know, we talk about following stuff to the letter of the law or the intent of the law. And this, this variance before you, I feel like the intent is to prevent a kennel from going into a neighborhood. But where there's a highway separating it, and there's commercial, there's a commercial area, I think if, if the dogs were to get out, you'd have more to worry about than, than them going to, you know, to harm neighbors or whatnot. If they got out, they'd be more concerned about the highway. But again, I just want to go on record as in support. I commend Sandra for starting a business during this difficult time, and I look forward to seeing what becomes of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? I see there's two attendees. Frederick, I see a hand raised. You're welcome to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Fred Sonalar. I live at 36 Goodwin Avenue, two houses away from Sandy, having known her for a number of years to attest to her work ethic and to her commitment to the community. I also echoed sentiments preceding my speaking as to anyone wanting to expand a business in the climate that is going on. I think that she has proven that her ability to manage a business and to get along with people is exemplary, and I respectfully request this committee grant her petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Hearing or seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents?
Chairman.
Okay, Ira?
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect to everybody, and I don't know Sandra. I didn't even know she had a kennel down the front of Pines. It's on my district, so it really wouldn't concern me. Now, the history of the 250-foot ordinance was established about six to eight years ago. And actually was brought on board by myself and voted by every one of these, you know, all the older councils, not the new guys. But we voted 250 feet because it was up in off Squire Road, in the back of McCobah Street, Ward Street area, Charger Street area. And at that time, the council, myself, the site planning review, all agreed that a legitimate distance from a residence is 250 feet. That's why we're here today, because this request is literally adjacent to my ward, literally 100 feet away from the front door of the proposed location. The approach across the street is 100 feet, the front, their front door is 120 feet. And I did a rangefinder from the front door, and 250 feet brings you down almost halfway down Kimball Ave., up to the corner of Beach Street and VFW Parkway, the homes along the VFW Parkway. And there, you know, I actually walked the neighborhood the other day, and there are 60 residents who would be affected by potential dog barking, not only during the day, but at night, because I understand they were gonna have 10 dogs at night, potentially staying over. And I know it's a training facility, if that's, if I'm correct in that. And they would have the 40 dogs during the day. Now, my concern is the quality of life that is gonna affect those neighbors across on Kimball Avenue and VFW Parkway, and also on the corner of Beach Street. Now, they say, oh, you're not gonna hear the dogs. I hear from the neighbors on Kimball Avenue. They told me they heard the dogs in the kennels when the dog trap was open, and that's over 1,000 feet away. So I have a, you know, I congratulate her for trying and trying to make things work. But again, I have to look at the quality of life of my constituents. The ward line is right in the middle of that roadway, VFW Parkway. Up to the fence line of the center of the median strip is approximately 60 feet from the front door. The other 60 feet are from the fence out to that first neighbor's house at Oliver and Kimball Avenue. And may I say, well, it's, it's gonna be directly abutting another business, beach sales. And they want now to express their opinions on it. But, you know, with all due respect, you know, I, you know, I think we're all dog lovers. I love, you know, I don't have anything against dogs. But in this case, you know, it's still affecting the human being's quality of life. So if the counselors don't care about that, that's fine. That's their opinions. But I have to protect my neighborhood. And I am expressing my opinion, and I hope this is not approved, that 250 feet is put there for a reason, and 120 feet is less than half the distance of that 250-foot limit. So with that, I hope it's not approved, and I wish her good luck, no matter which way it happens. And that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? I see one other person online. No hand raised? Oh, hand raised, okay. You wish to speak? Howard, you're welcome to speak.
Who is it?
Howard Freeman, you're allowed to speak. There you go.
Okay. Can you see me and hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I just wanted, I'm sure you all know me, of no beach sales, we've been here for over 45 years. And I just really want to.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My, my home address or the beach sales address?
Home address.
Home address is 3 Travis Terrace, Peabody, Mass.
Okay.
I'm here at 80 VFW Parkway a lot more than I'm home. And again, we've been here for over 45 years. I just wanted to voice my concern because the kennel is gonna be right on the other side of this wall, which is where my desk is and where our office is. We have to deal phone calls and talk to customers, and I'm very concerned about the noise level. I don't know how much sound barrier this wall is gonna be for us. And that's really my major concern here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other opponents? Anyone else oppose? Hearing not all closed, that side of the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Ira? Mr. Chairman, Ira?
Yes?
Just, you know, a little addition for Howie, you know, when I talked to the other folks in beach sales, one of the other items was the, how they're gonna handle the blood feces and urine stones that would be coming out of here, and what kind of fencing they would have on the back of the building to protect the dogs and, you know, try and keep them quiet. If you got an answer to that, we'd be happy. Thank you.
Okay, I believe the all of the counselors received a copy of the plot plan and the fenced area. Am I correct?
That's correct.
I never saw it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ashley, are we able to put up that one item?
Let me look through my email. The packet was emailed to the.
I believe I have it in front of me, but I'm not sure how I would.
I can show you. You can actually do it real quick. I'm gonna allow you to share a screen. And if you click on the green button at the bottom of the Zoom screen, there's an option for share screen.
Okay. All right, I'm sharing a Zoom screen, though. I'm not sharing.
Did you have that pulled up at all? The?
Yeah.
That other tab that I see to the left, your other website tab? Is it on that?
Not on here right now.
All right. I'm gonna stop sharing, and then I'm gonna pull it up on my email.
Is that me? Am I?
Were you looking for the plot plan or the floor plan?
The actual floor, the plot plan that shows the dimensions of the fencing outside.
Just have to download the packet. Hold on.
I believe it was an email sent secondly to us, Ashley.
Yes, I, I found it.
Okay. While she's doing that, I can, I can, I went and toured this property and.
Is everyone able to see that? I'm sorry.
Yes. Howie, yes.
Okay.
Oh, to the right corner, it says vinyl fence at lower level. It's going to be going across. And I was concerned, is it gonna be on the upper level by the vehicles? And it is. It's a, there'll be a vinyl fence going along from where the stairs were there, going all along down to the, almost to the corner of the property where there's parking spaces. There'll be a fence, I believe, six feet high at least.
Eight feet, actually.
Eight feet high.
Eight feet, yeah.
So eight feet high there, and the kennel is down a sloped area there. So it'll be the, the grade of the garage level. So you're having probably 12 to 16 feet where that area, the outside area will be from the highway.
Chairman, was there an upper level on that or a lower level under the building? Because I know there's two big.
If you're looking on, from, if you're looking on, from the front of the building, you have the parking spaces to the right there, where it says down on the plan. It's all parking spaces there, and then there's parking spaces in front of the building. Well, the fence is gonna be at the very top of that area. So if that's an eight-foot fence at the top of that area, and the below-grade level is a garage, you have a fence that's eight feet, probably going down 12 feet to the lower level of the, where they would pull in behind the building there, or be on the side of the building. You're talking, it's, I would at least say that you're probably talking eight, at least 18 feet below. So, and that area is not gonna be where dogs are outside kennelled all night long. And from what I'm told is the dogs are inside, the only way they'd be going out there is to defecate and then they'd be cleaned up there.
Yeah.
That was my concerns, and I believe she answered my concerns when I went and toured the property.
Correct. So the, the dogs are actually gonna be in the inside, on the basement part area, and they'd be going out, obviously, to get some outside time. But during the night, pretty much on the evening, because the, the location's gonna be closing at 7 at night. So the only dogs that would be left there would be anything, any dogs that are overnighting. So from basically 7:00 PM till 7:00 AM, if there's anywhere from, you know, two to 10 dogs at maximum, that's all that's gonna be there. But they will be on the inside and sleeping at night like most of us do.
Mr. Chairman, one question if I may. Ira?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thanks. Where would you be storing the debris from the dogs?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Where would you be storing the debris from the dogs?
So that, there's gonna be a dumpster that's gonna be going at the very bottom part, wherever, it's gonna be picked up weekly.
Weekly?
Weekly, correct. And that's being double-bagged on construction-type bags. And there's also granules that can be put, that, that is actually put on the gravel that's there, that is gonna be put in there, that actually minimizes all this, any kind of additional scent. The actual gravel has to be washed daily to maintain any contamination for any other dogs during the day. So that has to be done on a daily basis.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Any other members who speak?
Yeah, Michael, I had a question. This is John.
Yes.
Would it be unreasonable for her to put a soundproof barrier between her and, and the business next door? So his concern was about the noise of dog barking when he's in his office talking to clients.
So the, the dogs during the day are actually gonna be in the basement area. I don't know if the offices next door are in the basement. Upstairs, the only dogs that are gonna be during the day will be the dogs that are actually doing training. So there really is no barking, because obviously that's what we're working on. We're working on structure. So the only time that they would be upstairs would be throughout the night to sleep, which they will be in kennels at that point. I don't know if that helps.
But there's no guarantee for him that he wouldn't hear any noise while he's in his office. It's not unreasonable for him to get a soundproof barrier, maybe on your side, that would alleviate any.
If I can, if I can speak, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I believe that this is a leased property too. It's the, both of these people are leasing the property from someone.
Correct.
There's one owner of that entire property. There's one owner of that entire parcel. Am I correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
This is, this is Tony Zambudo. I, I think that, you know, if we're talking soundproof, and you're talking, you know, a, a, a one-inch soundboard would, would, would certainly give a lot of protection to the office next door. But I, I mean, because of the way this is structured, I don't even, I don't even think it's going to be necessary. But if it's, you know, if we're talking about putting one-inch soundboard on one wall that's outside of, that separates his office, you know, I'm not sure that, that's a big deal. Of course, you'd have to get permission from the landlord that that's doable. But as she says, there's only going to be dog training upstairs. And I train dogs.
Okay, we lost the volume again, Tony.
No sound, counselor.
Okay, any other, anyone else wish to speak? Okay, hearing none, I would ask for a roll call, please.
Roll call on the variance request. Mr. Buchilli, voting yes. Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Voting yes. Mr. Lopes.
Did we lose John? Okay.
Mr. Lopes, voting yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Mr. Pelton, voting yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker, voting yes. The variance has been granted.
Thank you.
There's no further business, Chairman.
You all for your time. Good luck, Sandra.
Thank you very much for everybody.
Okay, no further business. Our next meeting is November 18th. If we have a clerk available to control, I thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Good night, all.
Good night.